...is eternal life, and that's what we all strive for. And I ask Father God if you would touch all of our board members, our superintendent in his cabinet, and everyone affiliated with the school system in Coffey County. Let us, Father God, in this year be the best that we can be. And I ask this prayer in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Father, have the agenda. The question will change. First, two, the agenda for the board's meeting.
Officer Washington, set up your agenda for the board's session.
Ms. Johnson.
Second.
President. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. We have been working on the agenda over the last few weeks. And the first item on the agenda for review is the minutes. If you will find the minutes from the previous meetings, give your approval. If you want to take a minute to look over those and see if they meet your approval.
Everybody good with that? We'll put that on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. All right. Monthly financial report. We have the January eighteen, two thousand and eighteen monthly financial report. You'll see that we have a end-of-month fund equity of fifteen million seventy-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents. You'll see our revenues and our expenditures. We do have Ms. Tracy Young here tonight with us. She is serving as the interim comptroller at this time. And she put together the financial report that you have before you. And Ms. Young, is there anything you need to add to that report?
Our revenue was strong this month. Our missing book calls may be just the tax, you know, probably cash owed me, so it worked very well. And we were actually up a little bit compared to last year, basically.
Have we collected most of those?
They will still come out, they'll still come out, you know, throughout the rest of the year.
I will say, I'm very pleased with the rate of pay though of our community members and taxpayers. That we have a strong early pay rate. It appears that folks are paying their taxes, if I'm correct. Hopefully, that indicates a strengthened economy. The next document is the monthly comparison of fund equity balance. You can compare the fifteen million seventy-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents to last year's fund equity at this point. Our principals have been doing a really good job, and teachers of just being mindful of being good stewards. Can't say enough about the way our people are operating efficiently. Any questions about this report? The next document is the monthly financial. The general fund revenues. Ms. Young, is there anything that you would point out about this report? Are there any questions that anybody has? And then the last report that we have is the East Plaids report. Taxes through December of seventeen. The earnings for this December were very similar to last year. Looks like October was much better this year than last year before. And then September was strong. August was over the year before. At May, I'm sure it looks good. In the June, if you go back to three years, it's July. The Nichols School, we had a walk-through Wednesday. Mr. Chowers came to the walk-through, and we walked the new Nichols School. Ms. Young was there also, and Dr. Banks. And we walked the school and looking for punch list items that need to be addressed. They are in, they're having school. The demolition still has to occur on the backside of the building. So it's, the project is not complete. There's still work to be done by the contractor. And so I think they said it would take a few months, maybe three months to demo, get that done. But it's moving right along. The Performing Arts Center, they're almost through with the basement. Foundation that involves the basement, a lot of rebar that's going into that, a lot of concrete that's had to be pulled. And they're not far from getting able to bring in steel and start doing up for the building. But the rain, they did point out that they had quite a bit of delay with the weather over the past couple of months. With the rain, with, of course, the cold and the rain. And so it's been a challenge for them, I think, with the weather out there. But they told us that once they get this foundation done, it should come up out of the ground very quick. It's going to be an impressive building. Got in the middle of the site, look around, it's going to be a big building, so you can be proud. Are there any questions about those projects or any expenditures? Dr. Banks, was there anything I need to add to that? We've been on all those sites.
I would just like to say, at the Nichols, new school, the teachers and the students are happy about that. So hopefully, those test scores are going to rise.
Yes, sir.
They were very excited about it, and I was at fault, too.
Yes, sir. All right. That's our splash report. If it meets the approval of the board, we'll place this on the consent agenda at the month of the meeting. Out-of-state travel. We have several trips. Coffey High School. The drama program will be going to the Times Union Center for performance. The band will be going to Troy State for Honor Band competition. And the chorus. The Troy State Auburn Alabama Honor Bands, students from the southeast.
We've got five kids going.
Yes, sir. It's those who are in the Honor Band that are invited to be there. Troy's in. And then we've got the chorus with the chorus in Jacksonville with the Lion King. Any questions about out-of-state travel? All right, we'll place that on the consent agenda. Connections for Classroom. Dr. Newell pursued a grant opportunity that was offered through the state Department of Education. And he's here to tell us about the grant opportunity that he pursued and worked hard to go after. So, Dr. Newell, I'm going to give you the floor.
Okay, thank you. We applied for and received funding through round five of the Connections for Classroom grant. This is a grant provided from the Governor's Office of Student Achievement. See the award letter that we received just this Tuesday? And it is designed specifically for end-user student devices. We can't buy software, we can't pay for staff or anything else. It has to be for electronic devices that students use in their classrooms. We did receive a significant award last spring and used that to purchase over seven hundred Chromebooks. This one is not as high as that. The criteria were a little different this year, but we did receive one hundred percent of what we asked for. And as you can see here, that is eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars that's been awarded to us. We just have to have more approval to see those funds coming down. So we ask you to approve that on the consent agenda tonight. Basically, what this will do, depending on your approval, we will post a bid announcement tomorrow. That'll stay out there for, I think, about twenty days, we'll do that. And see what kind of response. Last spring, we had nineteen vendors submit responses, and Harry Jones came in very, very low. They beat the number two vendor by a pretty significant margin, and they have been honoring that price since then. We've been purchasing exclusively from them at that same great price they gave us last spring. So based on that number as being the target, we feel like we can hit something in that ballpark again. If that's the case, that should give us approximately four hundred and fifty more Chromebooks. This is a little different, so they're saying, you know, we're looking for X number of Chromebooks. We basically tell them this is the amount we've got. How many can we get at this specification for that amount of money? So we should get some good proposals in. With that number, based on the fact that we're right at one-on-one in our elementary and middle schools right now, the area that we see the greatest need is at the secondary level. So freshman campus, basically divide these out as equally as possible based on enrollment, based on the T E M one they already have. So if we get that four hundred and fifty, we're looking at about one hundred and fifty going to freshman campus, about three hundred going to Coffey. That's the general target we're going for. So with that being said, if we get those in, the only local cost, we will have to buy the management license that we used to manage the Chromebooks. And we got a great price on those last time as well. We can get pricing through the grant, but we have to purchase those with local funds. So I think last time we got those, it was around twenty-three dollars a piece. And if we get that number, that's going to be about ten thousand four hundred and forty dollars. So we would need to pay for the slots to buy the licenses for those.
Is that for this school term or next?
Yes, ma'am. Based on the grant award process, we could possibly have these as soon as about six weeks around. Everything goes smoothly. Hopefully, in time for spring testing. Maybe with some more testing devices at high school freshman camp.
So basically, you're asking us to allow you to get us to do that?
Right. That's an easy one, I hope. We just have to submit a letter of intent, and we're considering the possibility of seeing if you'd be blessed to do that.
I will say this, talking about technology, I hope, I don't know, the last, at least five years, you know, we've made a move technology-wise. Had to, I guess, but it complement. And that's not something that's traditionally been in your budgets for school systems. But I will say this, I think that our school system is as technologically sound as any of them around, any of the ones we deal with, even from Atlanta. I think our technology is on par with anybody. And we have done it from a financial standpoint very recently. I mean, through grants, and the ERIT's helped a lot. But I mean, I think you guys have found some creative ways to make sure that we've been able to, you know, get where we need to go, and it hasn't busted our butt. Because that's not something, like I say, that generally people count on having a butt. So I appreciate that.
And it's going to be a challenge. I was just talking to Ms. Young before the meeting. We're almost where we're going to be as far as the number of devices right now. The challenge is going to be remaining there because these things have an approximate useful life of about three years. And we can't get comfortable once we get there because those older ones are going to have to start being replaced. So, you know, it's going to be a challenge.
But that's where we are as a society and as a school system, is our education's going the way of technology. And that's...
It's okay with the board, we'll place this on the consent agenda, approval at the regular month of the meeting. Two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school cal- that seems strange, doesn't it? Two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school calendar. So we've got Dr. Evans here tonight.
Do we need to do that tonight?
Well, we were just going to talk about it. We're not asking for approval. I don't think I've got, uh...
I just, I guess no way you need to be officially...
Yeah.
I was just going to point out the highlights.
We were just going to talk about it. We're not asking for any action or anything. Still, I'm ready to talk about it. And this is just a draft, and we can do it any way y'all want to. You tell us that we were just going to present to you basically a draft and then go from there. Let y'all have a first say on what we do with it. I'm not so... This way is kind of a starting point.
Okay, this draft pretty much mirrors this year's calendar, not many changes.
Starting a little earlier, isn't it?
A little earlier. The current calendar is short, six days. Well, they had a hundred and seventy-four days in this year's calendar. And our goal with Dr. Lee's and the leadership team, we've been talking about trying to get back to the hundred-and-eighty-day calendar. This proposal does that. It starts us, starts students back four days earlier to recoup four of the lost six days. And the other two days comes from the parent-teacher conference days. Instead of giving the students the whole day out, they come and it's an early release day, like we used to do it a couple or three years ago. So that recoups the six days. The highlights in this calendar, and I've done this long enough to know what's popular with our staff and our parents. You've got the Labor Day holiday. We've got parent-teacher conference days or student days, like I just mentioned. We've got the four-day fall break back in October. This current year, we only had the Friday off, I believe it was. We've got the week of Thanksgiving. We've got ten days for staff for Christmas, eleven days for students. We've got Martin Luther King. We've got a four-day weekend in February linked to President's Day. And we've got the weekend for Easter, spring break. And that week can either be before or after Easter. You see the Easter date there. And then last day of school, May twenty-fourth, graduation on May twenty-fifth, and post-planning ends on May thirtieth. So pretty much mirrors this year's calendar with the exception that we put those six days back, two of those being the parent conference days. So just something to be thinking about. I have already had people calling from businesses and various places. And a few parents just want to know if we have the calendar set. They're beginning to plan vacations and that sort of thing. So, and even, you know, some of our other daycare agencies and other schools kind of...
Tell them we didn't have it set.
Oh, yeah.
It might be four days later than four days earlier.
I told them we're working on it.
My momma done told me about it.
What, uh, we're not doing it on Veterans Day, is that right?
Veterans Day's on Sunday, at least in this county.
We still on Friday in the school system?
No, we don't have a school day designated to be off.
Did we have one last year?
No. This year, we did.
We still do the programs.
We still do the programs.
Yeah, we certainly have the programs.
November, November tenth was setting. We were out on November tenth.
We did that on that.
Atlanta, that's on a Saturday. We were out on November tenth. So yes, we did take a night this year. So, anyway, that's the proposal.
Like I said, this is just a first run and a draft of getting in front of y'all so that we can start moving on. Any feedback you can provide whether it be tonight or in the future, just get back to me.
I think it's going to leave a little work.
Yes, sir. All right, retreat date. I've got, uh, we need to have a retreat. And I spoke with Ms. Miller. And she called me and said she couldn't be here. So I thought I'd talk to you all about a date. And in talking with her, I'd like to have a retreat with the board before the end of February or early March, certainly if possible. To start talking about budget, FY nineteen budget. I know that we've done it a couple of different ways. We've had the Saturday retreat, or we've had the German week. Ms. Miller did tell me in February, Fridays are good with her. She could do a Friday. Yeah. We could do a Saturday would be good. But just looking at the calendars, I don't know if we can make any decisions here. If y'all just want to look at your calendar, and y'all can, we can get back together and try to decide on a date. But, uh...
I'm glad I'm on Saturdays, it's a good one. Fridays aren't good.
Yeah.
First two Saturdays, I have my basketball player. So I don't have a name.
Oh, Fridays are going in February, the first two Saturdays are early, about seventeenth. The President's Day. What about that Friday, the twenty-fourth?
That was Saturday.
Always got the Saturday, the twenty-fourth, Friday. Be good if I get on two thousand and eighteen. I would say that the end of February that's good with us is we'll be, we'll have our preliminary staffing meetings done by then. So we'll be able to come back with y'all the results from the preliminary staffing meetings for each school by then.
On the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, we should, we'll have that wrapped up by then.
Reese's Job Fair is the twenty-fourth.
Really?
I mean, that wouldn't...
Yeah.
Our Reese, our Reese's having a job fair on that Saturday. Some of us are participating, and then ours is March twenty-fourth.
Well, you could, yeah, you won't have to.
What time will the retreat start?
We didn't do the retreat, we can stay here. Stay there every time. Usually about eight-thirty. Maybe around eight, eight-thirty, something like that. Nine o'clock, whatever's good with the board. Tentatively, does that twenty-fourth look good? Well, it's, I mean, Ms. Clayton doesn't have to go. She could send a representative over there.
Some of the principals, I think, are going to go. I mean, I don't have to go.
Get until last part of February, first part of March, I'm going to be busy. But I was just planning, make it work. I might have to leave, run somewhere, come back, whatever, but, I mean...
We'll start on the third.
Twenty-fourth, we'll get it out. We'll pencil it in.
You have the second and the third apart.
Yeah, that March third could be potential if that's good with everybody.
I'd rather do twenty-fourth than third, but...
All right. Because I'm definitely going to leave, that's going to be a bad meeting. All right. Tentatively, the twenty-fourth, that'd be...
And did I understand you said at seven AM?
Last y'all want it. Now, we'll show up whenever y'all tell us to be here, but, um... Usually about eight-thirty, something like that. What do you think? You want seven?
Oh, no, no, no.
Nine? Isn't that good?
What do you think?
Eight-thirty?
Okay.
Eight-thirty? All right.
I might be able to have a church conference that week.
All right. Well, tentatively, we'll say that's the retreat date. If anybody has any major conflicts that you find out about after this meeting, then always get back together on it. All right, process for selection of board members and for new board member. And this deals with the local legislation that governs the selection of a board member. If there is a, the death of a board member, if the board member has to step down, or if the board member moves out of their district. Then I've talked with several of you about this, and I've talked with Mr. Chowers, and put it on the agenda just to have discussion. I know it's something that we discussed over the last twelve months in different settings at different times, maybe one-on-one. But I did think it was something we should talk about in a board meeting. I know the current local legislation says that board member replacement would be selected by the board members who are currently on the board. And I know there's been some conversation about possibly looking at, like the city did last year, in which they've gone to a special election process if that were to occur. And so they have the time. City, you familiar with what they did, the city?
I'm really, Mr. Chowers. They call a special election, and it, you know, there are four special election dates, and they use the next one. That's my recollection.
We could say that if the remaining part of the term is over six months or over a year...
Average board decides.
If that's something either. And there is, there is, it is time sensitive because whatever the board decides to do, that would have to go through the state legislative process. It's local legislation, which means that our state rep and our state senator would have to move it through the House and the Senate as legislation that would ultimately be signed by the governor. So it's not a local school board decision. It is actually something that has to go through the state offices. So I just wanted to mention it and, uh, so.
Didn't, Sid, didn't you say it had to be close enough to the actual time to elect to do it?
I mean, Johnson really, if the board elects to have a special election, really before splash and everything, the board could set an election. And now we're limited to four dates a year. But you can, if you decide to have a special election, uh, then that's what you do, it would be the next special election. And what I think Mr. Law just alluded to, was, you know, if there were only two or three months remaining in that term, you wouldn't wanna be having a special election. And I threaten that might be impossible. Those are dates are something like March, June, September, November. But, um, it's completely board decision of whether to have a special election. Number one. And number two, if you're gonna, and I think this would be kind of foolish unless, you know, there's a fault, kind of default provision. If you don't do anything, if it's, uh, for example, I'm gonna use Mr. Johnson for an example. If you had died within, uh, you know, soon after you were elected, that you would probably wanna have one as soon as special election. If you're gonna have a special election, some boards, majority of boards, really just go by appointing a member themselves. But if you're gonna have a special election, some of them actually appoint a replacement member until the next election. And you could see basically the default provision is two years, ninety days. Now, how that's there, but it's, it's in the election, I mean, in the education code. So if it were gonna be less than two years, ninety days, uh, you would have an election. If it were gonna be more than that, I probably said that backwards then. Okay. And so if you died soon after the, you were elected, then if the default provision would kick in, you'd have that election. Some of them actually appoint a replacement till the next election. Now, that to me, everything's a board decision, obviously, but you would probably wanna go through the process of having a, uh, an appointment process and then be having a, uh, a special election, you know, soon after. I had it, again, everything's board elections, I mean, a board decision. You can write the book. I have, and talking with Dr. Lee's, I could say, Mr. Chairman, actually, I've been, you know, I've been around here for, done job this one for a while. I've actually had three of them. I had Glenn Mott and James Anthony was appointed, and then Drew Tanner resigned, and I think that was, uh, Spivey Grady came on, Jesse, Mr. Jowers. And then the last one, of course, Mr. Johnson died. Um, the, uh.
And Mr. Clyde.
I mean, Mr. Clyde. Uh, oh, thank you, sir. And Mr. Law, if I wanted. Other than some discussion at board, mostly just what I've heard on people that have commented to me when it was discussed shortly after you were born, Ms. Johnson, and during the process. And they just might be leaving political greatness out the window. But, uh, the complaints were primarily in District One. Why should four white people be appointing a black board member? And I could say anything's there. If you wanted to have it where, okay, the District One, they have, we're gonna have the election. And we worded so majority and sound like. And if there were other, but everything is how the board would want it. Dr. Leece, you know when we began a couple of weeks ago, you know when the session, I meant to look that up and I just forgot. When the forty days runs out this year?
I'm not sure, no, sir. I don't have that information with me.
Basically, uh, they don't have to take on forty days. Sir? They don't have to take on forty days. They're, well, everybody.
All they gotta do is pass a budget.
They gotta be in there forty days.
No, they don't. They don't have to take forty days.
Well, I thought.
They have forty days. They're limited to forty days, but they don't. It's kind of like paying taxes, Sid. Democrats like yourself are wanting, you can pay all the taxes you want to, you're not limited. The government's gonna take its share up to the limit. It's all they're allowed to pay. But you're welcome to pay them more. They're not gonna give it, they're not gonna turn it away. They have forty days, but they don't have to take on forty days, right?
Well, they have forty legislative days.
Right. But they, what I'm saying is that's their time limit. They can get it done sooner. They just choose not to.
But this year, I know there're gonna be forty days. And so if they declare a week of recess and those don't, the clock's not running. But all the board needs to do, if they need to do is get the, we have to run an advertisement for one week. And then they can introduce that the next week and run it through the House. Well, the local legislation originates in the House, so they go through the House, and then next week you go through the Senate, and then the governor would probably not, maybe, maybe not sign it. If he didn't, it'd come back in July one. But, uh, I'm not sure that they'd have it like that.
But we must come up with a policy of how we.
Ms. Johnson, what Dr. Leece was saying, is the legislature is, is up Senator Perko, I mean, Representative Perko and Dominic and Larrick and Senator Tyler, but they're gonna defer to the local board on this issue. And so they wanna know if this is what you want, the board wants.
Well, that's what, the first issue we got, is whether or not we even wanna change the policy we have now. Now, to report to somebody, no matter what, we got to say that if that's a problem, if that's a problem we wanna change, then there's a couple of different options like you're talking about, but, you know, I mean, are we gonna change it or are we not? You know, I could, I could honestly, I could sit here and argue this from both sides. It probably makes a pretty good argument for Portland or Lakeview. You know, I can see it both ways. This is not a, you know, straight down middle issue for me. The thing I would lean to start with would just be simply, it's been working, you know, five foot. Now, like I said, I could certainly argue it all, but I think that, you know, the concerns like, like what you're saying, well, you know, you've got a, a predominantly black district that doesn't want us to, but, I mean, I think we take that into account. I don't think we're gonna sit there and put somebody in here that we feel like they're not gonna lie. We, we tried to make, you know, a, a good faith effort to put somebody on here to represent that district, whatever that district may be. You know, I think we did a good job. You're saying this is the third time we've had it happen in the last safe.
Correct.
And I don't see where we've had a, you know, huge problem doing that. So obviously, if it's not good, you know, why mess with it? But I can also, like I said, I could, you know, I'm perfectly willing to listen to the argument from the side because I can see, I, I can see where there could be problems in the right situations, you know.
Nobody might not have said anything to you, you know, officially, but it was kind of scuttable that we think that we need to be, do like the city. So my suggestion would be that we come up with the timing before we have a special meeting. And that'd be fair to everybody, you know.
Well, I definitely think.
Something like, if there's, if there's less than a hundred and eighty days left, then, you know.
Right, something like that.
If there's more than a hundred and eighty days left.
I mean, in the situation that we were in, with Ms. Johnson, even if you were to change it to an election process, the closeness between her being appointed and election, I, I don't really see any reason to have went to all the trouble having a special election. In my situation, probably, you know, probably sucked. I can see that, you know, cause that's four years. So there are some time issues there if you decide it needs to be changed, and I definitely think it'd be with that. We can do something. All right. Well, can we let Sid check and see what the city has done and get back? Yes, sir. You let us know if we need to have a call meeting to the science side. That's right. We can come back and that will be. I intend to put it out there for y'all to discuss in the open meeting tonight and then for us. I'd love to actually what they did and do, not that we got to do what they did, but I'd like to have an idea of what.
Well, I mean, I can, I can say from going through it twice with Mr. Clyde and with Mr. Johnson, that I think, I think the process worked well, but I think it also takes time from the board on what the board really ought to be doing, which is, is looking after the school system. Not that, not that appointing someone for an open seat is not taking care of the school system, I mean that, but if we could just simply say, okay, there's gonna be an election and do well for the new board member on, I mean, that's, that's a whole lot simpler than what we, both processes we went through. We went through interview and we went through, you know, if you wanna apply him to the role and, you know, talk, you know, that sort of thing. And we did all that out, you know, that was all transparent and open and everything else. But I think you're right. I think that the districts, we were, I'll put it this way. We've been fortunate the three times that, I mean, Jesse was on when Ronnie was appointed, but, you know, good folks got appointed and good folks are.
They lose their work up there.
I'm sorry. But, but you're familiar with how they work. I mean, yeah. Yeah. But, but I can see where that could be taken advantage of if you had.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it's been working, so you kind of hesitate to change, so it's been working. But I can see where the potential for not to would be. I do see that. I understand that. Questions I would have would be.
Well, I think we have to be sensitive to the cost of the thing. I mean, if we, that's why, I think it's fair to put it on a parameter where you say, hey, if there's a hundred and eighty days or less left in a term, then you appoint.
Well, and also.
And if it's more than that, you know, are you saying there's only four days a year that you can do a special election?
Four months.
Uh, and then you get into, you know, one. It should, sure, a lot of times it should. And you're, you know, you're three months, four months out from being able to get an election done, you know, that does kind of scrap the board for a pretty good amount of time without having that member there. That's something taken. They have one every quarter. I was gonna say, if you fail, if you had to fail right after one and you're looking at three, four months there before that election, where's our point process after one month? There's a lot of different things that go into that. I just, I just like to say the thinking that district elect, I do want it, this gonna be very long. I'm, I'm good with six months. Well, and that was, uh, that was kind of the thing with Ms. Johnson, you know, it was a short time. And I think we went to great pains to make sure we appointed that person, but also in, what, sixteen, eighteen months, there was gonna be an election either way. So, you know, uh, but, you know, and like I said, there's a lot of different things. You know, I think, I think we did a good job. I think Ms. Johnson did a good job. With all that aside, I still think the people knew to have that, that city. But that's just my opinion, you know, that's, you know. Well, I was gonna say, I think we can argue. Kick it around and. We will get a copy of what the city is doing and bring that back to the board and certainly do whatever the board wishes to do in this issue. So make sure everybody feels good about however. I try.
I do remember, Mr. Jowers, they had in process when Mr. Roper died, if you think about it, they went ahead and got it done. And Mr. Roper died and they did have the election, the next special election date. But I will confirm all that, too.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is audience participa, uh, selection of two thousand and eighteen board officers, the board chair and the vice chair.
Oh, I'll say for the, you go, um, I'll tell Mr. Jowers, I appreciate the job that he's done this year. The job of chairman of Coffee County Board of Education is challenging, it's time-consuming at times, and it's, uh, not always the easiest job in the world. I think he's done a good job this year. I appreciate the job, respect the job he's done. Moving forward, I'd like to make a motion that our vice chairman, Brian Preston, move into the chairman's role in two thousand and eighteen. And I'd like to make a motion that Ms. Miller, who I have talked to her, I'd not do it because she wasn't here tonight, but, uh, would move into the vice chairmans. So I think the two of them work well together. I know from past experience, Mr. Preston has always been very professional and thorough in his job when he was chairman, I guess my second year here. But I did speak to Ms. Miller and she said she wasn't gonna be here, but she said she would be willing to do that, you know. I feel that position.
Do we need that in one motion or two? You can do it in one motion. Motion. We have a motion.
My second.
Second. Can you discuss it? Thank you, Mr. Law.
We're sitting down.
Do your best we can. Okay, we have a motion, second on four for Mr. Preston, service chairman, and Ms. Miller, vice chair for the next year. All right. And at this time, do we have any audience participation?
Mr. Johnson, I didn't sign that, but can I say a speech? I don't know about maybe two minutes. I failed, I signed it the last time.
All right. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jowers. You got there. Afternoon, everybody. I think everybody know my name is Larry Neesemuth, and I live in Ms. Miller's district, although I haven't officially met her yet. But the reason I'm here tonight, guys, is, um, just to speak to you from a heart, from what I feel, and that is that none of us in here are perfect. We have all made mistakes in life. And if you think you're perfect, please go to first floor. That's what I thought. None of us in here are perfect. We have a teacher that made a mistake, and she normally, normally was with us. I'm here in the community. I hear what, uh, local citizens said. I want the board.
Excuse me, ma'am, Mr. Leece, ma'am. Are we discussing personal name?
No, I'm talking about teacher. I'm not talking, speaking no name. I'm just talking about the.
What we had on that?
I didn't say anything.
I would instruct the Mr. Chairman not to mention names and, uh, if he wants to be generic on so far, I think he's.
Okay. The only thing I'm saying is that Coffee County is blessed to have good teachers. I have substituted, I have substituted on the Dr. Um, Dr. Banks leadership. You know, I've worked with these guys. We got really good teachers. We don't need to lose that. Politicians come day in and day out, law enforcement, but a good teacher is something that's gonna make us grow and make us grow stronger. I want the board to take in consideration on what's going on in, in the education field. Don't always look at Facebook or all of these type of thing and make a quick decision. Sometimes we as people make mistakes. We sometimes say things. I have sometimes done some things that I didn't really mean to do, but I did, or I said, but then maybe that's not what I solely meant. And if I can provide to you something that says, hey, look, it was an honest mistake. And if I can provide to you something that says, hey, look, it was an honest mistake. For myself, I went to jail one time. Sid, he laughed at me, but when he found out the reason I went to jail, he said, okay, now I understand why you did that. He shook my hand, said, job well done. Because people didn't know why first, he didn't stop and ask me what I did wrong, why I did it, but once they found out, it was on my side. To find out, hey, I really was fighting for the rights of everybody, for the justice for everybody. So I'm asking this board to reconsider your thoughts, and to come down to your students, your employees, your teachers, and make sure that you're making the right decisions, making the right decisions. Make sure that you're fighting for and not against, because losing a good teacher. I'm sorry, guys, I don't know if y'all know or not, but that's one of the worst things in the world that we can lose, is a good, dedicated teacher. Please, please reconsider, have it in your mind. And I'm saying this because I, I feel it. Your job, whatever you might be, you got doctors, socials, bachelors, they all came to be a teacher, and I guarantee you, every one of you got a good teacher. There's somebody, one teacher that you had, that you remember, that stuck with you. I know I do, Miss Holmes, God bless her, but I like to beat the crap out of me every day, but she made me, and I remember her. She called my mom and daddy, told me what I done, but it made me to be the man that I am now, that I know how to forgive. I forgive everybody, if I got an enemy dog, please let him say I'm sorry. So I'm really just asking you to fight for your teacher. Go to that teacher, if it's one in particular, and find out what's really going on. Find out what's really going on.
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Neese Miller.
Thank you, sir.
I will say this on our general, our policy is not really comment on audience particip, you know, participation. But I will say this, you know, I don't know the circumstances speaking of, but if there's one thing that we fret over, it's termination. Uh, if we have that, that gets, you know, brought to our attention, it's never an easy decision, uh, no matter how plain it looks, that is something that we, I can guarantee you, we put a, a lot of attention in. And it's never an easy decision, you know, we look every opportunity not to. Uh, you know, sometimes there's things that we don't have a choice in, you know, sometimes it's just the best decision that can be made, but I guarantee you that we do put thought into that decision, and it's never an easy one, I, I would guarantee you that.
Oh, Mr. I'm sorry.
Appreciate you, Mr. Flott.
Okay, Mr. Jowers.
Thank you, Mr. Flott. Dr. Lee's?
I would ask the board that we go to an executive session to discuss personnel, before the, before, uh, evaluate.
Need a motion for it?
I saw one.
Ms. Johnson? Law, all favor? All right, we're going to move to the executive session. Need a motion to enter the executive session?
I saw one.
Johnson? Preston, all favor? Well, this time we will go to the work session, and go in a regular meeting in about five minutes.